Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this January 2 meeting of the Pierce County Council, our very first one of the year. The time is 3:02 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Campbell.
Excused.
Councilmember Krueger.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morrell.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have seven members present.
We have all seven members present and a quorum. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and Land Acknowledgement. Please join us in listening to the Land Acknowledgement and Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Councilmember Denson, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to the dozens of lives lost in yesterday's earthquake in Ishikawa, Japan. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewarded at these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. I'd like to invite all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are now at Section 4, Approval of Our Agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Sign no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action item. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda simply for introduction and scheduling. On today's consent agenda, there is one grant approval, which is subject to public comment. During Section 9 of the agenda, we will take public comment on the single resolution that is on our agenda. And finally, under Community Forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. We ask you to remember to address all comments to the chair and be mindful of the decorum expected during this meeting. And for more information on the rules for public participation, please review the bottom of Page 1 of today's agenda. That brings us to Section 5, our Consent Agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Sign no, Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda. I'd like to open this up for public comment on the consent agenda. This is an opportunity to provide comment on any final action items on the consent agenda. There are no members of the public in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on the consent agenda, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Section 6, Messages from the Executive, our judges, or the prosecuting attorney. There are several messages from the executive transmitting the following ordinances which were approved and signed on December 18, 2023. They included ordinance number 2023-44-S2, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council adopting the biennial budget for 2024 and 2025. The executive signed ordinance number 2023-63-S2, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council adopting the Pierce County Capital Facilities Plan. The executive signed ordinance number 2023-71, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council amending the previous biennial budget. The executive signed ordinance number 2023-72, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council that levied the property tax assessment for the Noxious Weed Control Board for the year 2024. And finally, the executive signed ordinance number 2023-73, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council authorizing the executive to enter into a long-term aircraft hangar and office space lease with Vertical Development LLC at Pierce County Airport's Thunfield. We're now at Section 7, Proclamations, Recognitions, and Awards. Today, the Pierce County Council proclaims the month of January as Mentorship Month here in Pierce County. We have our guests with us virtually. They include Jim Croft from the Washington State University, and also Amanda Scott Thomas, Partnership Director with Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you both for joining us. I'd like to call on Councilmember Hitchens to read this into the record. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I was amused by the photo of the Zoom screen being taken. It was a little distracting, but I appreciate it. So, "A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of January as Mentorship Month in Pierce County, Washington, whereas every January, our nation celebrates the dedicated mentors whose wisdom, guidance, and positive examples set our children on a sound path and help prepare them for the future. And whereas Pierce County has many dedicated mentors in the community, including the Boys and Girls Club of the South Puget Sound, Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Puget Sound, WorkSource, 4-H Youth Mentoring Programs, the YWCA, our teachers and school districts, and many more great organizations doing amazing work to build the confidence of our young people through mentorship that encourages learning, growth, empathy, and life skills like resilience. And whereas, the Pierce County Council joined many other agencies like the City of Tacoma and Metro Parks by providing $500,000 in funding to support summer programming in the Tacoma, Bethel, Franklin-Pierce-Puall, and Clover Park School Districts for them to develop an after-school summer teen late-night pilot program that created safe places for middle school and high school students to gather, have fun, and engage with healthy adults ready to provide and support mentorship. And whereas, the program was so successful that the council has set aside funding in the 2024-2025 biennial budget to help expand the summer teen late-night program, and they allocated an additional $800,000 to fund young adult internships and employment programs. And whereas, providing these public investments in our youth is necessary, given that the events of the past few years have taken their toll on many of our young people, including the isolation of the COVID-19 pandemic that hampered the social connections and supports our county's young people relied on, as evident in the rising number of adolescents experiencing mental health challenges. And whereas, mentorship can extend well beyond youth, as seen with the multitude of success stories in the Pierce County's Business Navigator Program, which has visited 1,100 companies in Pierce County, 71% of which were minority-owned, and connecting business owners to resources like the Pierce County Skills Program, Business Skills Program. And whereas, the Pierce County Council supports the White House's Unity Agenda, which is pairing children with mentors who can open doors of opportunity and give them the additional support they need to excel in their school and in their communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this second day of January 2024 by the Pierce County Council, that January is Mentorship Month in Pierce County, Washington. All community members are encouraged to be a mentor to someone where and when they can, recognize the great work of others that are doing this in the community, to support our friends and neighbors, and engage with their local government to enhance and inform community members and county leaders of the great work mentors and mentorship programs are doing. Adopted this day."
Let's give them a round of applause. We would love to hear from our guests, who are deeply engaged in supporting adults and organizations in mentoring young people. Can we start with you, Ms. Scott Thomas? Good afternoon.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. Most of us know and agree that with the Nigerian proverb that says it takes a village to raise a child. Well, here at Tacoma Public Schools, we also believe it takes a whole child to raise a village. We know that there's decades of research that confirms that mentoring provides long-term benefits to our young people, including increasing high school and college success. We know mentoring to be a key protective factor to ensure our students are healthy, safe, engaged, challenged, and supported. Even in this 2023-2024 school year, we have nearly 70 formal partnerships that provide expanded learning opportunities for students, including one-on-one and group mentoring programs for organizations like Big Brother, Push for Dreams, Build to Lead, the Tacoma Urban Leagues MIP Program, as well as with the City of Tacoma. So, we're thankful to you all, to our partners, for supporting student success and families through mentoring, whether it be via formal program or just being a caring adult that is a resource for our young people, whatever your sphere of influence is. So, we just want to thank you for the acknowledgement. We acknowledge Mentoring Month 2 and the power of mentoring, and say happy Mentoring Month to everyone.
Thank you so much. Mr. Croft, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Mello. And I just have a few words here in appreciation also. WSU and Pierce County have been partners since 1960. One of our first extension programs in the county was the 4-H Youth Development Program. This program was based on adult mentors or leaders teaching kids about raising livestock, raising a garden, sowing, or canning homegrown produce. Although the times have changed, the 4-H program still supports youth in these projects, plus STEM, computers, rocketry, and other relevant life skills. The end result of this work is to graduate youth from high school that are ready for the workforce, go to college or a trade school, and be productive citizens. And many of our projects are in Tacoma Public Schools. Our Master Gardener Program is based on the same principle of train the trainer and to mentor community members, youth, and adults alike. Our trained master gardeners mentor our adult intern trainees to be successful in their training and their team projects. And we also have rain garden mentors, community garden mentors, mentors at the Washington Correction Center for Women in school gardens, and many other locations to bring science and relevant skills to the community. We deeply appreciate the continued financial support and partnership of Pierce County and the USDA National Institute of Agriculture to make these programs success. We also appreciate the recognition of many of our volunteer mentors at the annual recognition brunch. Prior to COVID, we had over 700 volunteer mentors, many of them mentors to youth and adults alike. Thank you again for proclaiming the month of January as Mentorship Month in Pierce County.
Thank you, Mr. Croft. Really appreciate both of you for being here, the programs that you lead, that support young people especially. I'd like to open up to my colleagues for any remarks about our proclamation declaring Mentorship Month here in Pierce County. Let's begin with Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing this forward. You know, what you said in the proclamation about being positive and having life skills is so important. I remember a family member of mine who grew up in Tacoma in the 80s, and they had some programs, I think the Boys and Girls Club on the east side there, were really, really important for their family. They had working families that weren't home during the summertime and things like that, and this really helped out her brothers and things like that to be better people, and they want to pay that forward. I think somebody said that there was decades and decades of research showing that mentorship is important, but all throughout mankind's history, no matter throughout all nations, mentoring somebody in your tribe, somebody from here that to teach them the life skills that they'll need to move forward is so important. It's something that we've always been doing, and we have to continue to remind ourselves to, one, pay it forward, being a mentor, and, two, to remember when we were teenagers or young people, and if we had a parent in the house, sometimes we just did not listen to them. And that third-person mentor sometimes can break through that ice and help build that foundation. So, when we're not around, that they can make decisions on their own. So, mentoring is an important factor to all of mankind. So, thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for allowing me to bring this forward. City of Tacoma did it last year, and I was like, wait, we didn't do it, and it was too late. So, I put it on my calendar, and we made sure it happened. I think that it's really important to acknowledge the work of any adult who is going to spend a little bit of time helping a youth kind of find a path. And that's one of the things that gets really overlooked are the unofficial. I'm not a formal leader, I'm not doing this officially, I'm not a coach, I'm not dealing with... You just, it's a neighbor that you know that comes over while you're tinkering on your car, it's somebody that shows up and helps you while you're painting a fence, and you have a really good conversation, or they walk your dog while you're, you know, struggling, and you have conversations. Those relationships with teens can really help. One of the key indicators that comes out of the Healthy Youth Survey that we do across the country and in the state specifically is, do you have a trusted adult in your life? Do you have someone you can go to? And for kids and youth that their family can't provide that, if they can find someone else in their life to fill that void, the outcomes for them are so much more positive. So, knowing that families struggle, knowing that youth struggle, if there's ways for you as an individual, if there's someone in your life, whether it's a nephew or a neighbor, those unofficial, just having a conversation, showing them a path, showing them an opportunity, talking through a problem, or just listening to them, just giving them a chance to communicate with an adult in a positive way is so important. So, just wanted to make sure we took some time, and these two programs, what Tacoma did this year and championed, and what we're doing at the county with the 4-H program and all of the work with the master gardeners, it's just phenomenal. And so, just wanted to make sure we pause and started off the year a little bit with some positive information. So, appreciate both Amanda and Jim for being here virtually, and to my colleagues for approving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. And Councilmember Hitchens, thank you for making sure that we started off our year doing this. As you were reading the proclamation, my listening ear went to your remarks, in fact, around unofficial mentors, not folks who just might go through extensive training to become a big brother or a big sister, you know, that will... Those are really amazing, those formal partnerships are really amazing. My brain was really going to those unofficial folks. Those are really special people. And I think back to, you know, growing up, and some of my first employment experiences, being able to witness what it's like to wake up and go to work every day and be on time and all of those soft skills, right? I learned from watching others. I didn't, you don't read about that, you don't learn about that in school, you learn by watching others. And that's what mentors do. And I'm so grateful that this council has invested in the kind of programs that we put in this proclamation, the paid internship program, so other young people can get paid employment experiences and learn from folks in trades and in workplaces, and the summer teen late nights program and the others. So, really grateful that we're starting the year off like this. This is such an important way for us to show young people a great path forward. So, thank you again. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Mr. Croft. We'll make sure that you get these in the mail, and we'll look for ways to continue to show the importance and lift up mentors in our community. So, thank you for all you do. We will move on to the rest of our agenda. There are no ordinances today. We have a Resolution 2023-169 before us. Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move adoption of R. 2023-169.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2023-169. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposal number R. 2023-169, a resolution of the Pierce County Council making appointments of council members and staff to positions on external boards, commissions, committees, and other organizations for the year 2024.
Thank you. Ms. Long.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So, this is a resolution you see each year. The council makes its annual appointments to the variety of external boards and commissions that members serve on, and also certain staff as well. In a moment, I'll run through the changes from last year, and there really are not very many at all. But I did want to highlight two changes in the first page of the resolution to some of the sections that is language we hope will clarify and make things smoother in the future. So, if you look at the bottom of Section 1, there's language that says, "Appointees shall serve for the year 2024 or until a successor is appointed." So, hopefully, this will allow for a transition if the council isn't able to get the resolution passed right away, and the members will still be able to serve on their various boards and commissions and committees. And then, Section 2 is also new, and this provides that appointed alternates shall serve in the order designated in Exhibit A, so it will be sequential. Sometimes, some of the boards and commissions have maybe three different alternates, and at least now it's clear as to the order that they will be responsible to serve if a member is unable. And so, I'll go through Exhibit A really quickly, just to highlight the differences from the 2023 appointments. So, you'll see in the Council Continuity of Operation Plan, we have two changes to staff appointments. So, our Chief of Staff, Julie Murray, will be serving, and Brenna Price will be serving as the coordinator alternate. Previously, it was myself and Priscilla, so change there. Courthouse Security Standing Committee, Brenna Price will serve as the staff member there and relieve Priscilla of those duties that she has been serving for quite a long time. Moving to Page 2, the Public Facilities District Board of Directors, this is the convention center, so there's a change there. Councilmember Denson is appointed to that, and previously, it was Councilmember Hitchens. On Page 3, we have two more staff changes. The first is to the RCC, the Rainier Communications Commission, and Mr. Cox will serve in place of Mr. Taylor on that as the staff member. And then, the next is the Sewage and/or Water General Plan Review Committee. Mr. Swanson will be serving as the alternate on that in place of Mr. Taylor. And then, the very last change from last year's appointments is the Water Utility Coordinating Committee, and the alternate on staff will be Mr. Swanson in place of Mr. Taylor. So, those are the only changes that we'll see from last year, and there is one amendment.
Thank you. There are questions before we take up Amendment Number 1? I don't see any. Vice Chair Campbell to move Amendment Number 1, please.
I'll move Amendment Number 1.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Amendment Number 1. Ms. Long.
Thank you. So, Amendment Number 1 would add, on Page 3 of Exhibit A, line 21, so in alphabetical order, the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Executive Board, or the SHAPE Board, and we talked about this a little bit at a study session today, it would name the member as Councilmember Mello and the alternate as Councilmember Denson. So, in the interlocal agreement, and I'll just add some clarification from the discussion earlier, so the members for the county under the interlocal agreement are the executive and the council chair or their designees, so we see that word. It does also later on refer to alternates, and it does allow an alternate for each of the members on the executive board. It also provides that alternates may vote on behalf of the member if the chair has received a written notice, and so this resolution will serve as that written notice and be provided to the SHAPE Board and the SHAPE Chair. So, with that, if you have any questions on the amendment, I'm free to give it a shot.
Thank you. Are there questions about Amendment Number 1? I don't see any. We'll take a voice vote on the adoption of Amendment Number 1. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. We now have Resolution 2023-169 before us as amended. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment on Resolution 2023-169, you're free to do so. We don't see any members of the public here in chambers, so we'll move back to our Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury.
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on Resolution Number R. 2023-169, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there any final questions or comments about this resolution? Vice Chair Campbell.
A question, when I'm just reviewing this one more time, I was noticing under Economic Development Board, it has Mr. Morrell as a non-voting alternate, as opposed to, we just use the term alternate everywhere else. So, what's the difference between a non-voting alternate and an alternate?
Ms. Long, are you...
I have to get back to you. I'm not familiar with that particular board and its bylaws or rules.
I mean, I'm the... Okay.
It's possible that their bylaws don't allow alternates to vote. That would be my thought, but I don't know. I can certainly get back to you on that.
Okay. Just was different from our region, so just wanted to find out, maybe Mr. Morrell knows.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not that I'm picky, but my assistant found a spelling error on Page 3 under the Sumner Library Capitol. Please remove one of my Rs.
Could we consider that a scripter's error?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
We will properly spell your name, Councilmember Morrell. One R, one R, two Ls.
You should not worry about that, but anyway.
We will have that corrected.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on R. 2023-169?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you, everyone. There are a tremendous number of boards and commissions that each member serves on. It takes a tremendous amount of energy to represent Pierce County well, and many, many hours of work that's not seen here at this dais and in these chambers, but out at these many different regional boards and commissions to govern the county. So, thank you for your service. We're at Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government and that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. We ask you to state your name if you would like it on the record, and to address all comments to the chair. Start with those in chambers. There still are no members of the public here in council chambers, so we'll turn now to our Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury.
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the community forum portion of our meeting. We're at Section 11, Other Business and Announcements. Under Other Business, we have the election of the 2024 officers. The council will be electing officers to fill the roles of Chair, Vice Chair, and Executive Pro Tempore for 2024. Is there a motion? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move that we elect you to continue as Chair, and Councilmember Campbell to continue as Vice Chair, and Councilmember Morrell to continue as Executive Pro Temp.
It's been properly moved and seconded for a slate of officers to include Councilmember Mello as Chair, Councilmember Campbell as Vice Chair, and Councilmember Morrell as Executive Pro Tempore. Any discussion? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge and thank the three of you for the work you did through the budget season and all of the work that you've been doing, and I think that you're a good team, so I'd like to continue seeing that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Any other comments? Ms. Long, is this a voice vote or does it have to be a roll call vote? If there's no objection, we'll take a roll call, excuse me, a voice vote. All those in favor of the election of officers, as moved by Councilmember Hitchens, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. Is there any other business or announcements by council members? Well, I will just share, we had a really productive and busy 2023. I'm incredibly excited to continue working with each and every one of you for another very productive 2024. This council is very ambitious. We've identified a lot of challenges and a lot of opportunities together in our budget, and I know this council really wants to continue to work together to really focus on the most pressing challenges in our county. So, we have an amazing staff here, both in the executive departments and the office of the county council, who wake up every day wanting to serve the people of Pierce County. And I know each and every council member works really, really hard to serve their district and represent their district. And we have a big year ahead. We have lots of challenges in front of us, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Ms. Long, is there any other business for council this evening?
There is not. Thank you.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.